So let's go ahead and begin then. Do we need to turn the recording on first?
Chair, it is recording. We're ready to go.
Thank you. Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting of the Provo Municipal Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. The time is 5:31 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are now being held in hybrid fashion. Members of the public may continue to view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. The mayor, councillor, city staff, and any presenters are participating in the council chamber or by using Zoom webinar. The coronavirus pandemic is not yet over, but vaccines are available. We encourage everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated. We encourage all people to protect themselves and others by following the protocols set by the CDC and our state and local health departments. Stay safe and be kind. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. We remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. We have three councillors here in the chamber, three participating online, and I believe will be joined shortly by the fourth. Mayor Cuffusy is here as well, as Deputy Mayor Isaac Paxman and other members of the administration and council staff are here as well. The opening prayer tonight will be given by councillor Sewell. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be able to meet together tonight to consider items pertaining to the welfare of the residents of Provo. We appreciate this great city that we live in and pray for thy guidance and direction. Our discussions and deliberations and votes will be helpful to the citizens of our city. They will make good decisions. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy. Pray for thy protection and guidance in all that we do. And we ask this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen. The pledge of allegiance will be provided by councillor David Shipley.
Please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Strachan, I believe we're ready for public comment.
Yes. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes overall. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. You will have two minutes to speak, and the public comment period starts now.
Not seeing anyone here in the chambers approaching, and don't see anyone online with a raised hand, so we will close public comment and move on to Action Agenda Item 1, which is a resolution appropriating up to $65,000 in the Fire Department in the general fund for fire truck equipment. And this item is to be presented by Jeremy Hedman, Deputy Fire Chief.
I'll start really fast, and Kelsey Zarbok from Finance, and Jeremy will get into the the nitty-gritty of what this appropriation entails. I do want to point out, this was noticed for a resolution appropriating up to $65,650 in the Fire Department in the general fund, which was a little different than what the slide indicated. The funding source for this appropriation is interest that has been accruing on money set aside a while ago for the purchase of two fire trucks. One of those fire trucks wasn't purchased right away, and so over $65,000 has accrued in that interest account. And so what we would like is to ask the council to appropriate that interest for the Fire Department to use to buy equipment related to those fire trucks, which is in line with those terms of the lease, which requires us to use the interest for those purposes. So any questions for me from Finance before Jeremy talks about the equipment? Okay.
So real quick, we'll go back. The two vehicles on the screen are the two that were purchased with the lease and have benefited the Fire Department greatly, and we appreciate that lease that the council gave and the mayor. We appreciate the equipment that we've been able to purchase for it. However, there was some stuff that didn't make our list because there was only so much money in the lease. And so the $65,000 is going to help us greatly, and we have a list of what we'd like to buy. One of them is a hazmat monitor, so a Raman spectroscopy, which is something that helps us determine what hazardous materials are in the field without opening containers. It helps us stay safer and helps us to quickly identify chemicals. We want a couple of swiftwater kits, a large area search system, and a confined space fan, and a rescue pole that we use for water rescue that would help prevent us from having to get in the water to rescue a conscious person. So those are the items that we have that we plan to buy with the money that's been set aside through this lease. Do you have any questions? Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. We'll now open this item for a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. All in favor? Three councillors in the chambers have voted yes, and I'll call the roll for those participating remotely. Councillor Fillmore?
Yes.
Councillor Harding?
Yes.
Councillor Hoben?
Yes.
And let's see, I think I'm seeing.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Got to make my screen a little bit bigger here. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now move on to item number two, and we'd like to welcome councillor Hoben, who has joined us remotely. This is an ordinance amending titles 14 and 15 of the Provo City Code. And Mr. John Magnus will give us a overview of this item.
Yeah. So on August 24th, council meeting, you passed the ordinance to clean up title 14 and 15. It was listed as gender-neutral grammatical and stylistic corrections. On further review, we went through the ordinance and all the changes. It's 54 pages. Found out there was some minor substantive changes that were not listed. Also, there were a few other sections that were not listed. So the discussion became, how do we correct that? We went through different variations of rescinding it or opening it back up and making amendments. And after further review, we found out that the planning commission had heard all those items and all those changes. There was nothing to send back to them for their review. So the easiest way to clean this up would be rescind the ordinance that you passed on August 24th, and then consider a new ordinance that you can review, make changes to, and that'd be the easiest way to move forward. So we're asking for, to, is rescind the decision from the 24th. This is what this, this item is, to rescind that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Magnus. I'll look for a motion to rescind the ordinance passed two weeks ago.
Could I, I'm happy to make that motion, but I just want to make a clarification for the public's sake. This is not any sort of retracting of the grammatical changes that we made that were necessary and were an improvement, and we will intend to reinstitute those, but because of this glitch, this is the way we're going to do it. I just I'm a little worried that there'll be some public perception to the about this that is mistaken. Ms. Ellsworth wants to make a comment, sorry.
Councillor Ellsworth.
This is just a point of personal preference, I guess. Because Mr. Handley wasn't here two or three weeks ago, maybe he doesn't want to make the motion. I mean, you're welcome to. I just don't know if that's an instance where you wanted to recuse yourself. Not necessary.
Not.
I'm okay.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Handley, second by councillor Ellsworth. Is there any discussion on the motion? And maybe I should just clarify along the lines of what councillor was saying. The main, the main issue with the ordinance was just the way it was titled in the agenda. It mentioned only stylistic and grammatical corrections, and we determined that there were some some small substantive changes as well. And so some members of the public may not have been looking for that because of the way that it was noticed, and so that's why we wanted to rescind. And then tonight, we, we do have the same item that is properly noticed and titled that we'll discuss in a moment after this, after this, the vote on this. Any further discussion on this motion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Three councillors in the chambers are in favor. Councillor Shipley?
Yes.
Councillor Hoben?
Yes.
Councillor Harding?
Yes.
And councillor Fillmore?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to Agenda Item Number 3, which is an ordinance amending titles 6, 8, 14, and 15 of the Provo City Code to make minor substantive changes and to remove gendered references and to make stylistic and grammatical corrections. This item is to be presented by Melissa McNally, planner.
Thank you. I really want to thank the council staff. They spent a lot of time going over this. And for all of you who read it, my thanks. It is huge. Yeah, lesson learned. We will not do that to you again. So we'll start off with this. It really is just a code cleanup. If you want to go to the first slide. And so this proposed ordinance text amendment code cleanup addresses the definition of household pets. We felt like it was more appropriate for that to be addressed in Chapter 8 for animal control rather than addressed in Chapter 14. And then Chapters 14 and 15, we included and changed gender neutral, or changed the language to be gender neutral. And then we also corrected floodplain being two words into floodplain being one word as it's defined in the dictionary. The change to include, excuse me, religious activities, and this is in line with the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000, so that's why it was, it was added as a permitted use in all of the zones. And then there is also a more clear definition of accessory, sorry, building within and without buildable areas. And this change was applied to the LDR zone, and that was so that it would be more consistent with the R1 zones. So that same language that you'll find in the, in that part of the code now, that change is in all the R1 zones. So if you want to go to the next slide? Okay. And then there are portion, there's a portion of the new FC3 zone that was erroneously missed when we created that zone. So that part is added back in. And then just some changes also in that zone to clarify conditional use changes. Also, there's a removal of Transportation Demand Management Program because it's already addressed in another portion of the code, so we're just removing some redundancies there. And then there was removal of some zones that have been redacted. So, next. And this just goes through the definitions in Chapter 8 that were included for emotional support animals and household pets. Want to go to the next? And then service animals, just to be in line with the ADA Act. The next. And then this is the change that, so this is for the accessory buildings for the LDR zone. So these are, this first slide shows the way that it was. You want to go to the next slide, and this is these are the changes that were made. This slide and the next one are the language that was changed. And I think, is that the last one? I think that's the last slide. Do you have any questions for me?
I had one about the federal law that you referred to about religious activities. What, so what does that law say? I mean, does it require that they be allowed in every zone in the city, or what?
I believe so.
Okay.
Rob, sorry. Do you know?
Let me answer that one. It's often referred to as Arluipa. Is the acronym that's used for that. And essentially, it says that it has to be treated the same in all zones. So if we're allowing it in a certain zone, then we have to treat it the same way in all of the other zones within our city. So it's the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act.
Interesting. The reason I was asking about that, by the way, I'm very supportive of that, of course, but I was just wondering if there was a way to, or if you'd considered a way to say that in one place rather than having to include it in every zone.
I'm sure that we could. Yes.
That's a really great idea. And actually, one thing that we've been working on kind of behind the scenes, if you'll notice in our code, we have a section of permitted and conditional uses in every single zone that we have. That's cumbersome to us as staff, but especially to those that are trying to read our code and understand it. And one thing that many other municipalities do, others that I have worked in, it actually just puts all of that information in table form. And so we are working on that. Hopefully, you will see that in the, in the coming months of just assigning all of those specific uses, either conditional, permitted, or accessory, into an easy-to-use and access table. And then then we won't have to do that in every single zone anymore. So hopefully, we're bringing our code up to date. We'd like to do it a little faster, but we have small incremental steps.
Sounds good. Mr. Fillmore?
Yes, thank you, Chair Sewell. I just wanted a little clarification on one point. That caught me off guard. I hadn't realized that was part of this. You referenced something about, I think the phrase is comfort animals, comfort pets. And you said we are aligning ourselves with a certain, was it a federal act or a state act?
Federal.
And so what is the essential change we're making from what we had in the ordinance before?
Let me see. I think we're just adding it to the code to clarify what a service animal is.
Are you saying that we didn't have anything in the code before, so this is brand new?
Not specifically like that, no.
I'm just confused. So are we adding to the code or something new, or are we just refining definitions?
Well, I suppose this is adding something to Chapter 8, yes.
What, what is the purpose of this change, I guess is what I'm asking?
To, just to define the different sorts of animals that are permitted.
Right, but the definition applies to some kind of other provision, prohibitions or mandates. What, can you just explain to us what's changing here? Maybe Robert can help you.
So, so this is just a new addition to Chapter 8 for service animals that coincides with federal, with federal code. And it's found in ADA. And I can give you the federal code citation also. It's just adding to our Animal Control chapter on the types of pets and animals that are allowed.
So I, I don't want to belabor this, but I'm still in the darkness of what we're doing and why. Apparently, we want to align with federal law, I understand, but are we, are we expanding the number of emotional support animals that people can can utilize for such purposes?
Can I weigh in, Melissa?
Mr. Johns, go ahead.
So Mr. Fillmore, councillor Fillmore, that what you're showing on the screen is the fact that they've added a definition. The substantive change is in 8.02.180, which defines where you can keep residential pets. And it says that you make, that residential pets may be kept within 50 feet of a residence in conformance with the code and licensing and zoning laws. Our previous definition of what a residential pet was, though, was somewhat ambiguous, and so there's now a change being included here, which says that that section that says you can have those within 50 feet of your residence specifically says what you can have are miniature horses. miniature horses within the requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations, service animals, emotional support animals, and household pets. So a household, and you see the two definitions here. So you could, under our old code, have a pet within 50 feet of your residence. You could not, under our old code, have an emotional support animal that didn't meet the definition of a pet. Now you can have either.
So what is the limit on emotional support animals? Could it be any animal that simply provides companionship or relieves loneliness?
I don't have any, I don't know the answer to that question. This is the definition that's in our code, and I don't know if that definition was, I defer back to Melissa's. I don't know if that definition came specifically from the federal code, and we aren't allowed to change it, or if we need to clarify that.
Well, I guess, let me give you an extreme example. If a boa constrictor gives somebody comfort and companionship, is it now allowed?
I think they have to have something from a medical professional that says to that effect that it provides those services for that individual.
If that's the case, we haven't said that in our code. So I think Counsel Philmore raises something that I think is, you know, based solely on what's in this section of the proposed amendments, I'd probably have to say that would be the case. We would have to argue that they did not meet that purpose, and that may be difficult to do.
I guess, I guess, Brian, my concern is that we've all read in the papers the last two or three years some rather bizarre incidents on airplanes, for example, where people insisted on their comfort animal being with them when the animal's either loud, noisy, foul, or dangerous. And so I'm just, as I said to these definitions, it looks largely limitless.
So what we've currently got would not in any way restrict the species of the emotional support animal as long as it otherwise met the definition. All of our other, all of the other provisions of our code regarding noise ordinances, whether the animal is a nuisance or not, whether the animal is allowed running at large, all of the other provisions of our code regarding animals would apply. But there is nothing about what's in here right now that would place any limitations on the species of an emotional support animal. And what I do not know the answer to without taking some time and conducting more research is whether we can do that under federal law.
I'm just, I mean, obviously, we're talking about a much larger ordinance change here than just this definition. But I'm reluctant to approve a blank check on this, given the problems that can arise in the context of emotional support animals. Is it possible to defer this particular change to a later date and approve the balance of the ordinance change?
Sure, we can cut any parts of it out that the Council wants to move to be cut out of the amendment.
Well, that's my concern. I don't know if it's shared by others on the Council.
Counselor Ellsworth?
It sounds like this comes from ADA federal law, right?
For the, for the, I'm sorry, for the service animals, the, yes. And as far as the emotional support, I'm not entirely sure on that definition, if that's something that was. Yeah, I'm not sure. Because that wasn't in before. Sorry.
So the emotional service animal part of this, actually, this is at the request of animal control.
Robert, I can't, I don't know, I can't hear you. I don't have anybody else.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So this section of the amendment is actually at the request of animal control to help them in enforcement. And the emotional support definition in here specifically says that those emotional support animals are not considered service animals. And so they can regulate them differently, and they're not exempt using the service animal definition because the service animal definition has a specific definition based on the ADA requirements in federal code. That's why we were asked to put this in here.
Okay, yeah, so it sounds like it's a tool needed by the the animal control department. And maybe this is in cases where if you went to the grocery store and someone has an emotional support animal, and they're claiming it's a service animal, then they can go through some kind of process to determine it is or isn't a service animal, like an official service animal.
That's correct.
Yeah, and then that store has more ability to enforce this code and work with our animal control department.
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, and then it also looks like it has some origination in the federal code 28 CFR 38, 35, 136, so I feel supportive.
So Counsel Philmore, let me piggyback on that comment from Robert and just say, I think this probably limits rather than expands our code, despite what I said earlier about all of the things that could be included in emotional support animals. Because what our code currently says is that you can keep any pet next to your house, and pet is defined as any domesticated animal kept for pleasure rather than utility. So I think the problem that you're identifying already exists. I don't think that, it doesn't seem to me that this exacerbates it in any way and may help with the issue that was just described and identified. Now, whether that means we may want to come back afterwards and take another look at whether we should have more limits than this proposes, I think that's definitely a valid question.
Okay, well, thank you, Brian, and to you, Robert. Your explanations are helpful. It does sound like it's intended to be more enforcement-oriented and perhaps even somewhat restrictive. With that explanation, I'll probably support this, but can I invite a further investigation as to how these definitions might be interpreted in the context of other city ordinances where we may have inadvertently expanded these rights beyond what's reasonable? I guess I'm looking at you, Brian, for that request.
Would be happy to, so let me make sure I understood. You're looking for further examination afterwards about whether we've expanded anything unintentionally with this?
Yes, unintended consequences of a new definition without considering the other city ordinances that might be affecting it.
I'd be happy to have our code enforcement attorney look at that.
Thank you so much.
Other questions? Counselor Ellsworth?
I just wanted to express my appreciation to staff for this nuanced and complicated code update. I'm glad that none of us work in Congress.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring it back to the Council for discussion. I actually have a couple of very minor suggestions to make on the wording. If we could pull up Chapter 14.02.130, Chapter 3C. That was 14.02. .130. So it would be up higher, 14.02. .130. Just passed it. Okay, now to Paragraph 3. C. Okay, right toward the end of the sentence there. "can be obtained by contacting the community and neighborhood services or and development services." Could we just say or there and strike and? Would there be any objections to that? Okay. One other one on 14.04B. .010, yes, right here, let's see. Oh, I didn't write down which paragraph it is, just a second.
Mr. Sewell, if I can just interject while you're looking up the next one, just because this affects the motions that need to be made. The one you just identified, the and apparently is actually a relic from one of the edits and is not currently in the code. So it doesn't need to be stricken. I mean, it needs to be stricken off the exhibit, but but we can do that without motion because that word is not in the code.
Excellent. Okay. The end of, the very end of the paragraph there. "Member of the City Engineering Division, a member of the Police Department, and other applicable city staff shall be appointed." And then the last phrase, but neither, the, where it says, but neither shall be considered a member of TMAC. The planning, the version that the Planning Commission saw said, but none of them shall be considered a member of the TMAC because there's more than two people being referenced here. So I think the earlier version is more grammatically correct there since there's more than two people involved there. So if there's an objection, I'd like to make that change back to the earlier version. Yeah. Right there. That was all I had. Anyone else have any comments?
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay. And Mr. Jones, is that sufficient? I've asked if there's any objection to making those, or do we need to have an actual motion to change the draft?
As I say, we have in the past always made the practice of asking for a motion to amend the exhibit that applies to, that the implied motion applies to.
Okay. Like to entertain a motion to make that grammatical change?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Fillmore.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ellsworth. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? There are three votes in favor here in the Council office. Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Harding?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Let's see, I forgot who I've said. Did I say Counselor Shipley yet?
No, it's that Fillmore guy, yes.
Okay. So we got them all? All right, so that passes unanimously. So now we have before us a draft with that correction. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve that? Thank you. I don't think we have. I'll open this item for public comment.
You have not, and there's no one in the online, but you should go through the process and maybe somebody joins.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Not seeing anyone here in the chamber coming forward to speak. Let's see. No one online either. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the Council for any further discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion to adopt this amended ordinance. All in favor? Three votes in favor here in the chambers. Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Harding?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. We do have one other item that was omitted from the chair notes, and that is minutes that were to be approved for the August, let's see, I'm having a little trouble reading this hand now, August 24th.
Mr. Chair, so the August 24th Council meeting and the August 24th Board of Canvassers meeting.
Thank you. August 24th Council meeting and August 24th Board of Canvassers. Are there any any desired changes or objections to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll declare those approved by unanimous consent. And since Item Number Four was continued, if there's no objections, we're finished and we'll adjourn for the evening.
And I had ice cream for you, but Isaac just went and got it out of the freezer. It's been a while. And it's just gross, so. I'm like, we cannot serve them that. So we will get you ice cream. Exactly, we want to make. Yeah, well, we've experienced that, so thanks, George. So we'll make it up to you. Isaac sent me a picture of what it looks like, and I was like, gross, no, we cannot serve this to them. So it's an IOU on my side.